We'll call this meeting yours of Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for November 15th, 2022. We'll call Mr. Peter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Jelka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda received is proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Public comments? I have no one in here. Anyone online? Public comments? Hearing none. Moving on to claims and payments.
Good morning, Board. We have quite a few larger payments today. Summer routine. We're paying for medical services for the jail for $115,000. Jail food for about $25,000. And the health department has a couple of consulting contract payments. One to Cole Consulting for just under $40,000. And $20,000 to See What I Mean LLC. Then we have Shive Hattery is paying, or I'm sorry, Conservation is paying Shive Hattery for Casey Lake Restoration Services of just under $30,000. And we're paying an installment for our work comp of $39,418. We have materials to Aspro and Peterson for Grundy Road, and that's about $50,000 total there. We're paying for engineering laptops to Dell for $10,801. We're making the allocation to the E-911 Board for their loan payment of $25,625. And I think those are all the significant ones. The total bills today are $561,150.75. And of that, $6,978.98 is being paid from the 6040 fund. Everything appears to be in order today.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moving in second. Any further discussion?
I did have a question, and maybe the boards received this too. There was an invoice in there, I think, for the design of the jail. Of that lobby, the front lobby. And I don't know that I've seen, and maybe others have, but has anyone seen, I guess, what that design is? And I know the specifications for it and that type of thing. Have we seen any information on that? I was wondering if-
Mr. Now.
Great.
I think, yeah, Nate Neff, jail administrator. That's part of the project that I've got on the ARPA Committee for the front lobby remodel there.
I was just wondering if we could see some of that information, have some of that, the design of it, and maybe just the specs of that. That was on the ledger here. I was just, maybe Michelle had, so.
Yep. Nope. I didn't know, I guess, if you wanted to wait until that went for the committee, or how you wanted that, but I'll be happy to-
I don't know what you prefer. I just was thinking of something we wanted to see, something that the board would want to see, I guess, too.
Incidentally, I just received disgust with Colby over at Baker Tilly yesterday afternoon. The written justification and proposed final evaluation for that. I have put it on for today's ARPA Committee discussion. I did not forward it yet to the board because I wanted the committee to discuss to see what kind of concerns or what kind, as a committee, we had before we began answering board questions. But feel free to join us in a little bit, and we'll be talking about it. And that contains the design as well.
Okay. I just thought when we were paying the invoice, it was like it would be something helpful to know.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Any further questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. All roads are snow and ice covered this morning. We're experiencing winter driving conditions. Our snowplows are out, and we do expect them to be out as needed today. It sounds like the snow is going to be intermittent throughout the day. I just wanted to put up a few slides this morning, just two slides, to remind our drivers that we are in winter driving conditions now. And just a basic reminder, slow down when you're driving in these conditions. Slow down and leave more fowling space between the car in front of you. We don't, even today, when the snow is not very heavy, we just need to be reminded that we are experiencing winter driving conditions. I just put two graphics together. This came out yesterday from the Iowa State Patrol and National Weather Service that it shows that 75% of crashes in Iowa happen in less than two inches of snow. So it's just a reminder again to slow down and pay attention. Leave more space between you and the car in front of you. And then my last slide, if I can find it. Just a reminder, if you are looking for information about road conditions in Iowa, that's Iowa511, which is www.511iowa.org. That's a really good place to look for conditions about the roads here in Iowa over the next four or five months. There's good information on DOT post camera views from their snowplows. So if you, you can just go on the map and click on, find the camera portion of the website, and then you can click on a snowplow and see what the actual driving conditions are on the roadway at that time or within the past 15 or 20 minutes that the plow was passed by. So these are just good reminders for our drivers. May I ask any questions?
Thank you, Kathy. Another good suggestion is clean your windows off. Every car, about 90% of the cars coming in this morning had their windows, had snow all over them. And not because it was snowing, because they didn't clean them off. Any other department heads or elected officials? Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sandy Smith, recorder. I just had a quick announcement today. Tomorrow, our passport agents will be attending the passport fair at U&amp;I in Bartlett Hall from 11:00 to 3:00. So we encourage anybody who needs a passport in Cedar Falls to stop on by. They're currently taking up to nine weeks, so we encourage people to plan ahead. So 11:00 to 3:00 tomorrow at Bartlett Hall. And they can certainly call our office if they have any questions.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes approved for November 8, 2022.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yeah.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa for the acquisition and installation of a precast single-family unit concrete shower restroom facility at Sigal Cove Park for the purpose of meeting the demands of the increased park usage and to maintain the highest level of sanitation within a park setting in the amount of $114,000. Utilizing American Rescue Plan funding be accepted and contracted award. The same, or the same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors and funded with ARPA money.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions for Mike?
Is that, do these have rankings today, the ones that we're going to approve?
They do.
What's the ranking on this one?
If I remember, this was a six. Is, I don't know if Mike's there.
I am here, and this was a six. This was approved by the board earlier when we had that, when we had that burden of proof ranking.
Do we have electricity in that park?
We do. Yep. And, and some of the, excuse me. Some of the reasons we're looking at this, or one of the main reasons we looked at this, was just the increased use. And, and, you know, we've said this a lot of times, but, you know, COVID turned a lot of things around for us, or it changed a lot of things. This little park over there is a classic example, and I won't burden you guys with a lot of numbers, but in fiscal year 19, that park brought in $851. Now, remember, the camping over there is, is not the same price that we have in Big Woods, Blackhawk, Hickory Hills, or any of those places. It's $7 for non-electric use, and it's $12 for electric use. But it brought in $851 in fiscal year 19. In fiscal year 23, the year we're in right now, we're only halfway through the season. It's brought in over $3,000. So if we do half in the fall and half in the spring like we think, we're going to be somewhere in the mid-6,000s for that. And so part of the problem that we've got over there is we have nothing more than open pit toilets right along the Wapshoe-Pennequinn River. And we do, we had the opportunity, we have a septic field already in, we have a septic tank already in because the camp host that used to live there, Peg, she had that trailer there. So water, sewer, and electric, everything is sitting on that mound where that trailer was. And this is, this is a water quality thing all the way around. Our usage is up 500%. And it appears that it's going to continue along that line. And we need to be a little better stewards of where that waste goes. And that's one of our, that's what the biggest issue we're looking at right here.
Is there a reason why this didn't rank lower than the six? I mean, I don't know how to take the scale of 1 to 10. I would think 5 and below is good to go, and 6 above is not. I mean, this ranking is kind of confusing. I just wonder if we need to pay attention to it, or what?
I'll try to nutshell that for you. Essentially, when they talk about burden of proof, think about it as to how many elements have to be proven, or how many, you know, justifying factors have to be proven. When, on these higher burden of proof level projects, which tend to be capital projects, we have, the final rule has stated that they're going to use stricter scrutiny for that. And so there are several, there are several categories of projects that can be approved, but they all sit with a higher burden of proof, a higher level of scrutiny that they would get if we were to ever get a treasurer's audit on this. Now, having said that, my understanding is that because we have provided our explanation and evaluation, and in some cases with larger projects, as we'll see coming before the board in the future, written justifications that include comparing the project to alternatives. We've done our due diligence, we've done our homework, so that we will pass muster under our annual independent audit. But we need to understand that if we were to ever receive a treasurer's audit, there would be perhaps more questions to answer. It's been the position of, I believe, the board that, given the, the evaluation and explanation that was provided, and the category that was selected, that we met the higher burden for this particular project. And I believe that was a four to one vote, if memory serves. So I hope that helps answer your question, Tom. It's, it's not always 100% clear, I get that. But the, but the higher the burden means the more scrutiny that it would get on, on audit.
Yeah, I understand that. My biggest thing that I'm struggling with these rankings is, I'm not worried about today. I'm worried about tomorrow, whether they're going to come back after the county. And I guess what you're just telling me, this six is probably a high or a low-risk burden of proof. Or what you're saying is we should be all right on this one. I don't know what, which one would be a red flag that we should really be careful on.
Could I?
Go ahead.
Thomas Grant. I think another way to describe it is that, you know, there are more boxes to check, but as long as you check all the boxes, you're in good, you're in good shape. You know, Baker Tilly is looking at all the proof that's being provided by the promoters of the projects, and they're scrutinizing that and saying, okay, for this particular project with the higher burden of proof, you need to make sure that you do this, and this, and this. Well, if you do this, and this, and this, then you're meeting that higher burden of proof. Now, if there are still questions as to whether the proof that's provided is, you know, strong enough to undergo the scrutiny that might come down the road, however likely or unlikely that may be, then, you know, they're going to tell us, and, and the board will know that and can make a decision based on that. With the projects that have been evaluated so far, as far as I'm aware, Baker Tilly has been satisfied with the, the proof that's provided, or the information that's been provided by the, the different departments. You know, there's still some that are hanging out there that they're still asking questions about. So, you know, they're being very careful about it, and so is the committee.
And so-
So if Baker, if Baker Tilly decides that a project doesn't meet the muster, is it going to be in a form of a ranking, or are they flat out going to say, no, this one doesn't meet the criteria? I mean, if we get a nine ranking, what's that mean? Did they check all the boxes and were all right?
The, the nine ranking is, it's all written. Each, each one of these rankings has the criteria written into the ranking. It says you have to do XYZ. And I don't have my file with me, or we can give you an example. I don't know if, Mike, you have something available or not. But that doesn't change. It's going to be the same for that ranking. And as long as you are asking for that project to be approved based on a certain part of the law that says these are projects that are eligible, then the information that is needed to be provided is going to be the same within that ranking. And that ranking's not going to change based on the information that you provide.
Example, Mike.
And to, to get back to your initial question, Tom, I predict you will be seeing one that is a, a nine or 10 ranking here, 10 ranking actually, on the near future. And I will tell you that I know for myself and for Baker Tilly, there were some troubling aspects to this particular project. We'll be discussing it in committee today. I also can give you an example from Conservation. Baker Tilly, Conservation had, had approved a van for purchase. We, you know, before the committee had even formed, those of us who gathered to discuss it thought it meant probably could meet the, the ARPA guideline under a recreation section. Baker Tilly immediately said, no, it doesn't. And gathering people in a van probably wouldn't serve a pandemic-related harm. And so what happened is Baker Tilly evaluated that to go under lost revenue or replacement revenue, which actually put it at a level one. The point was, they wouldn't put it anywhere on the other categories. And so that's one where they said, no, this doesn't work for expense category. Now, for this particular project, this Sigal Cove bathroom, they've said it does work. But they said, yeah, we've got more boxes to check. This is a level six.
Do you want to read some of the-
Oh, you bet.
They have in there.
So, so level six is, they call it enumerated capital under 1 million. And what that means is that means, they say, projects clearly enumerated in the rule as an authorized use with capital expenditures less than $1 million. And so what they mean is that the rule, if you dig through it, and I don't have the, the specific one for this, for this bathroom in front of me right now, but I could pull that at a later time. They, they provide for, they provide for this particular type of project, but it is a capital project, and so it is going to be looked upon with stricter scrutiny. And that's how it falls into that category. Now, we're going to have some that are going to be level eights, for example, which say, projects clearly enumerated in the rule as an authorized use, but they say the capital, but they have capital expenditures greater than $1 million. And then that, that triggers the written justification requirement. And we will have one that is a non-enumerated capital greater than $1 million. This hasn't come before the board yet for final approval, but this is a level 10. And on that one, the way that it has been described to me over and over is, you are, if this gets pulled in an audit by the Treasury, that is going to be, that is going to have the greatest potential to be challenged. From discussions with Baker Tilly, discussions with the committee, it's never been perceived that the enumerated capital under 1 million, if it's clearly enumerated, is a high risk once that category has been ascertained, which it has in this case. That's not to say there's no risk because we don't have Treasury audits to go by at this point. They would be years into the future.
Yeah. It, it's confusing. We knew it would be. Actually, we're not going to know today, tomorrow. Proof in the pudding's going to be five years, 10 years from now. Most of us, if not all of us, will be long gone. And I guess the future, if we did it wrong, we'll have to pay for it.
Any further questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is other business. This is a resolution to approve the Big Woods Wi-Fi upgrade to be considered for ARPA funding.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion?
Mike, I got, Mike, I got one question on this one, too. I talked to you a few years ago, and you said that that campground was going to basically go down to no electricity due to the annual flooding and the replacement of electricity three years in a row. Has that changed?
Well, no. Let me clarify, Tom. This is actually Big Woods. This is the new campground that we co- that we're working with the city. And when we opened that campground, just so that everybody knows, I want everybody to be on the same page here. Wi-Fi was installed in that campground. It was a part of, of the original plan. And that Wi-Fi was installed. And the reason we're looking at upgrading it now, actually, this came at a pretty good time. The equipment that is used in that campground for the Wi-Fi system, it's been used from the beginning, was supplied to us by CFU. CFU is now getting out of that business. They used to do this for other, other businesses and things like that. They are removing all of their equipment now, and it's up to us to get, to purchase our own equipment if we want to continue that. We've always had Wi-Fi there. The campers love it. And we certainly don't want to stop that, that situation. So actually, what Al has worked on for us will be a, a better system, easier for campers to use, and the whole thing. So, I mean, we're kind of winning on both ends of this. And, but this was here originally, and, and we're just, we're just replacing it because if we wouldn't have done it, if it couldn't have come by ARPA dollars, it would have come, had to come out of our, our budget. So, thank you.
And, and again, all three of these A, B, and C agenda items, these are just to kick it over to Baker Tilly for evaluation, to determine whether they are eligible.
Thank you, Mr. Tryon. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, resolution to approve a new check scanner for the Treasury's office to be considered for ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Rita?
Rita. This is a remote deposit that we have with our bank, with gaining our checks. We also process our motor vehicle renewals that we receive in the mail through this process. So it is a needed piece of equipment to, first, to meet our contract qualifications with former state bank, which also earns us more interest with doing that. And then also, it provides where people can mail in, and we can process and get the work out to them the next day. So this is the only equipment that we have for that check. If it would go down, we would be kind of in a world of problems with not having a more up-to-date machine. This one is, I think, is like five, six years old, I think. And we would still use the one we have right now as a backup, if there would be. We do not have a backup at this time.
Thank you, Rita. Any questions for Rita? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution to approve the Treasury's office remodels project to be considered for ARPA funding.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a second. Rita?
This is something that has always been on my, one of my projects that I wanted to complete. Our office, it's been, I think, 15 years since we've remodeled. Times have changed. How we process things have changed. COVID showed a change that we needed. Our, our office is not as readily accessible for a lot of public coming in, trying to do that spacing, social distancing, also for those with wheelchairs and walkers and that. The security of the office, we don't have locked doors. We are public service all, every day, whether it's taxes, motor vehicle. It's an office that can't be closed. We can't do it from home, and so we have to be there. So with the changes, with new software that we receive, retention of records, now records being held on the cloud or in, in computers, we don't need as much for that. And we need to remodel the office just to make it more functional for the staff, functional for the customers that come in and, and update this, and the electrical that goes with that. So it's, it's a much-needed improvement that we need to do for multiple things. Trying to bring in a technology for appointment scheduling. When that happened in 2020, we had no backup to get into it. It would have been around $50,000. That was not budgeted. We were not ready for anything like what happened. And there were a lot of counties that were already. And so I just want to get the office to the point that we're meeting our customers' needs and also being on the safe side also.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Any questions for Rita? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the work, work session, discussion with the Sheriff's Department on the 6040 room and board fund. Morning again.
Yeah, good morning again. I apologize in advance. My voice has kind of been coming and going the last couple of days. So this is something that we were kind of hoping to discuss a few weeks ago when the whole 6040 thing came up. I think it was the September 27th meeting where it was first proposed with Supervisor Jelka asking to take over the entire fund. We didn't discuss it that day. We discussed a little bit. Sheriff Thompson spoke some. And by the end of the meeting, we kind of came to the idea that it would be best to kind of put the brakes on things and have a work session on it, which was originally scheduled that next week, that first week of October. That came and went, and the resolution was passed without any further discussion. Since then, we've noticed there's just been kind of a lot of confusion between over the collection of the fees with the Auditor's Office. We've kind of sent some bills over. Again, with the 40% going away, we'd already budgeted certain things to come out of that. When that was taken away, we didn't know if we were still going to be able to utilize that 40% or not. We had some bills come in that we'd already planned on paying out of that. I know, I think, we called over and asked Billy, should we still send these over? She said, I'm not sure. We kind of called over and talked to Kayla, and she said, we'll send them over, and we'll get it figured out. So there's just been a lot of confusion on it. I know it's, obviously, it would have been ideal six weeks ago to discuss this, but I'm glad we got it on the, on the board now, so we can figure out the best way to go forward. I know I sent each of you a proposal that I hope would, would work for everyone. It's, I know it's very much similar to what it was before that resolution six weeks ago. The thing I did add in there is that there'd be a little bit more oversight, which I know Supervisor Jelka was concerned about on that. So again, it creates a little bit more work, I think, for the Auditor's Office to pull those things out. But that way, you can see everything that is coming out of that 40% fund. And it also allows, like I said, the board, if there's anything I put in there that would be considered questionable, which I know there are a couple expenditures that we still feel are plenty just- feel are plenty justified, but I can see where there would be questions on them. We'd ask for prior approval on those. Again, give the board a little bit more control, a little more oversight on that.
Well, I want to thank you, I guess, for putting the proposal together. It certainly gave us something to start on and to address different questions, and, and I thought I had some questions, and I'm sure others probably did, too. So I appreciate giving us a, a place to start from.
You're welcome.
From that.
Go ahead.
Well, and I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to review about the proposal, or, you know, I know you submitted it to us. Obviously, the public isn't aware of it or anything, too. And when we discussed it today, I think most of us have seen this document that you provided. But is there anything about it you wanted to review, I guess, with us a little bit?
I think the big thing is, I mean, I've laid out most of what we do use that expenditure for, and that stuff was brought up. It's a lot of our specialty training things, a lot of what our, our SWAT gets partially funded out of that. A lot of the stuff out at our training facility gets funded out of that. Our water safety patrol, our honor guard, we do some of our software upgrades out of that. So it's a lot of things that we really do need to, to function and to provide the best services we can to the citizens of Blackout County. And we're able to do that out of non-tax-based funds. If though, if we're not able to do that out of that 40%, then we're going to have to either try and get it back into the budget in another way, and if it's coming out of general funds, then it's going to be coming more out of a, out of a tax-based fund. So it's nice to have these, to be able to do these things. And again, it's kind of self-sufficient, it's room and board fund, so it's kind of, the people utilizing the jail and those services are actually paying for it themselves to help self-sustain us with that.
And, or maybe others. I was going to say, Dan, I know, like you said, you and Tom and Chris all zooming in, perhaps you have questions, too, you'd like addressed beforehand or not? Doesn't have to be just my questions.
Mr. Tralka, Chris, Tom, questions?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that you laid it out. I appreciate you've given us this proposal. And it's, you know, this is, this is the route we, that we took, so this is acceptable to me.
And just, yeah, one, one big thing I'd want to point out, too, is that we kind of talked about with, the sheriffs has kind of made it clear that the funding will not, or the collections will not be done by the sheriff's office. It won't be a primary focus of the sheriff's office. We're still taking in some, as I pointed out in the email I sent to you. There's still some coming in. We're not going to be able to direct our full focus to it. We've got people that are doing it, are kind of doing it as an add-on to their current duties. So if the board were to take it over, there'd have to be someone else that would take on those collections. And it just seems like whether that's hiring another body or using a collections agency, I just don't want to see, those funds that we're currently using for the betterment of the county and for the betterment of our citizens are now going to go toward just paying. They're, it's going to pay to sustain itself, which just, I don't think it's the best, most efficient way to do things.
No, I appreciated that. It looks like from your proposal that you'd continue, or the sheriff's office would continue collection of that.
Absolutely.
So that wasn't something that was going to be, you know, questionable. I, I guess, I'll ask a couple of questions then, too. You mentioned the 40% of the room and board would remain in an account to be used at the sheriff's discretion to pay for unbudgeted operating expenses such as, and then you let, you itemized five. Why are those not budgeted items, or could those be budgeted?
I mean, they certainly could be. There are things that, especially with the drone ones, the water safety patrol, that kind of stuff, whether it's trailers, whether it's boating items, that kind of stuff, it's kind of hard to put a price on exactly what those will be. And with a lot, so it gives us flexibility if, one year if we need new STVA tanks for the life team, if we need a new drone, if we need something repaired with that, it gives that flexibility. So one year, we may not have to spend much out of it, the next year, we'll spend more. And then another part of that, that's come up with, we're paying all the expenses out at the range. I know, and that's something that Craig and Tom have brought up a couple of times, that Tony's made it clear that he doesn't want to spend tax dollars to use the range. And so by doing this, again, it's through the room and board fund, it's not a tax-based fund, it's coming from those people that are utilizing our services.
On some of these, Captain Neff, do you know what percentage of, you know, like, you talked, you talked about honor guard, how mu, how much, how much money is utilized for the honor guard every year?
Honestly, probably not much on that. Craig, that's some, I don't have anything to do with the honor guard, so other than their uniforms and the upkeep of their equipment and stuff, which once someone gets on, we buy their uniform, and it's probably good for almost indefinitely. But, so that one would be a relatively small expense, but an expense nonetheless that we're able to utilize out of that fund.
But that category is much what you're talking about, the training and equipment for specialty teams such as the aerial response, water safety patrol, honor guard, and that type of thing. I assume we've been doing that for quite a few years, so we do have trends or budgets or something that we could look at if we did want to budget that. That was just a question I thought.
Yeah, yeah, there would definitely be trends we could fall back on.
And, um, let me see, I've got some different questions here, I guess, to the sheriff's discretion. Now, and, and that's how it's been determined, I'm assuming, for quite a few years.
To my knowledge, it's been 20 some years, almost 30, I think, that this agreement had been in place.
What was that, Linda? I didn't.
Um, it mentioned that 40% and these, and those five categories that he had listed said they were spent at the sheriff's discretion. And that was the training and equipment, software, programming updates, service contracts, as such as those required by Stanley and LiveScan. I'm not familiar with what those are, but.
Stanley is our operating system that opens and closes all the doors, that runs the cameras. It's basically what our mass control operators use. That one alone is several thousand a year, and our, let's see here, LiveScan is the fingerprint machine that talks directly with the state. So when I take fingerprints, it automatically sends things off to the PCI.
And then the maintenance costs, as you mentioned, too, on the, the training facility, that utilities, internet, garbage collection, and pest control, those types of things. I would assume those are items, too, though, that could be budgeted. It wouldn't necessarily have to be at the sheriff's discretion. It could be budgeted, and so we'd have some history, I guess, or looking at that in a budgeted cycle, I guess, to say, yes, this is approximately what we think.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, obviously, we've got our Mid-American bill, we've got the utilities bill, we've got the media com bill, everything else that goes out there. And again, a lot of that falls back on to just the sheriff not wanting to use tax-based funds to support the range. He's trying to keep that out of the hands of the taxpayers.
Yeah, yes, I understand the goal. I was going to say that, isn't it, it's just, I guess, the determination.
But yes, there, there would be definite numbers that we could go back and pull and say, well, we need to budget.
And, and I know your statement, and, and it's probably very good to qualify it for saying that unbudgeted operating expenses such as these, but not limited to those. So there were other things that you were wanting to keep in this category, I guess, at the sheriff's discretion, or.
Honestly, Linda, nothing came to mind, but I just always hate to paint myself into a corner.
No, I know. Like I said, I appreciate you here today and actually trying to answer some of the questions on the proposal and make it a little clearer, so thank you. I do have a question. It's the sheriff's office will seek the board supervisor's approval prior to submitting an invoice to the 40% fund that may reasonably be seen as questionable. And I'm thinking, and this is just me thinking, that when you're presenting the invoice, it's really kind of after the fact, so that the service has already been received and probably the, where the board, I'd think, would want some discretion or want some voice in this would be before the purchase is made or before.
That makes sense, yeah, I could have worded that one a little better, I think.
Oh, well, hey, I'm not out to pick on you for that, how you wrote it. I think you said, it's great that you had something there, but I was just wondering if that's how we meant it to still work.
Yeah, I think prior to the expenditure would be, as opposed to prior to the invoice, yes.
Because to me, then, some of the things that we're doing now, even those items that maybe we find were questionable, or we thought we'd have questions on, we're unable to because they've actually been, were being invoiced now for the services performed, so that makes it a little difficult. So do you, I, I'm assuming you understand a little bit, what we're looking for, I guess, is for more discretion and more due diligence, I guess, on the behalf of the board from a fiscal perspective?
Yeah, absolutely, and I understand that. I mean, you, you're ultimately responsible for every tax dollar that passes through here, so to want to have oversight and control over that, I certainly don't, don't blame you for that. Like I said, it's, it's nice, definitely, to have an input into it, and hopefully come and come to an agreement that we can work on it together.
So if, if, and this is just a question, because I know, like you said, we kind of, we took action on it, and, and the board may wish us to, you know, continue to have the control of this and hire people for it. That's up to the board to make that decision. But to me, if we kept the process in place that you have now, but just asked for more discretion of the board, us being involved before those approvals are given, I guess, for purchases or, you know, or budgeting also, another place to insert, kind of where we'd go forward in looking at those items for the year with the sheriff?
Yeah, absolutely, and I know Dan had pointed out, and he wanted to make sure we're following under chapter 356.7 with those expenditures. And it says right in there in black and white that we can have an agreement with the board as to how those funds will be utilized. So I think that's what we're doing here.
So was that, and maybe Dan best to answer that. Were you thinking, Dan, of entering into an agreement, then, or just something that would give the board kind of the authorization to have more say in this?
I just want to have more oversight on the expenses. I tell, uh, we didn't, we weren't doing our job.
You're breaking up, Dan.
So, so, yes, I was going to say, so then, if we had more say and more oversight as far as our responsibilities in, in those 40% for, for the most part, because the 60 are really kind of determined, is, is that ultimately your goal, or would that be your goal, just doing that, not so much in changing the process of collections and individuals being hired or doing, you know, something else as far as collections? Are, are you as a board, are we as a board, I guess, looking at that we like the process and the way it's been working, it's just that we want more say in the funding? And how it's spent, or approval before, maybe before some of those are acknowledgement of it? I don't know that that's what the sheriff wants, but it's certainly something for you, us to propose to you.
Yep, no, I, again, I would say, he's the one with the, with the title there, so he's the one I'll have to take it back to. But I've discussed this with him, and he's fully on board with this. And, I mean, I think it's, I think he sees it as a win for all you guys get. Like I said, the more control, the more oversight, we still get kind of the flexibility to operate.
Are we looking at putting a number on, on it, Linda, of what amount, you know, above or below a certain amount? They wouldn't have to bring it to us, or anything above like 5,000, just putting 5,000 out there? Anything above 5,000, they'd bring to us? Anything under 5,000, they can go ahead and purchase or do what they need to do?
Well, we could, although sometimes there's questionable things, I suppose, that maybe, I, I don't know, that's up to the board, what that amount would be, or if it's certain things, or if it's, like, you listed some things here, obviously, some contracts like for permar and some of those types of things. I could see those easily being, these are ones that.
Yeah, our LiveScan one is, I think, several thousand a year. The PACE one is several thousand a year. A lot of those contracts are up there, but I mean, they're a once-a-year thing. If you wanted to take a look at them, that's obviously not a big deal at all.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought.
I was just kind of thinking, especially as we were getting into this, it's like, you guys don't want to vote on our Mid-American bill every month.
No.
You don't want to vote on our pest control bill every three months or whatever it is. I mean, some of that just seems a little overkill and a little silly, to be honest.
Didn't we put solar out at the range?
That's something we've been looking into with the GO. They've been talking about it, may not actually be as, as efficient out there because our costs are already so low. We have been in talks with.
All right.
With the company on it.
Sounds good, thank you. Mr. Gebin should have been on top of that, had it under, under there.
Well, is there anything else, I guess, that board members or that you want to say or change or offer or something from this, other than some of these things? I just thought there are areas, probably, we should be.
Yeah, no, I mean, that I, kind of, I don't know what I would hope for. I would definitely agree with you. We could change that one where invoices to, or to expenditure, but.
I suppose if a problem arises on anything, you can come back and, or we can call you back and, you know, make adjustments to.
You know where to find us.
If needed to. Yeah, we know where you're at.
Well, with going into budget process, that seems to me like a good place to really kind of go forward and look at some of the things, kind of defining what we should be looking at. And I'm sure with Finance Director New in the position, too, you've got lots to dig into. But I just thought, too, if you have any thoughts on, I guess, on, on the proposal you sought to as well?
I, obviously, that's the board's discretion, what you're looking for, but some of the things that came to my mind was maybe getting board preapproval for new items. So a lot of the items you have listed here, like the software and programming updates, maybe the current maintenance everyone's aware of and is okay with, but if you were to change vendors or want to add something new, maybe that's something that the board would want to pre-approve. And the same thing, maybe with upgrades to the physical office, that, that's something new, probably, so they might want to pre-approve that. I thought those kind of things might be where the board would like to have more of a voice.
Right, so, so the recurring expenses wouldn't be as much of a concern?
I don't think, that, not in my opinion, that, I, I agree with you, that, that doesn't seem to be very valuable in people's time to approve the Mid-American bill every week.
No, and I wasn't thinking on a weekly basis or anything, too. It was just like budgeting some of those items, like where they budgeted for.
And we can, we can certainly talk about doing that. The other one is the qualitative issue that you, you kind of alluded to, Linda. I know Supervisor Tralka had a couple that I would call qualitative, that he just wasn't comfortable being paid for out of that fund. I don't know how to set a dollar amount on those, or really to define them, because the problem is they're unusual. But it seems like we want some kind of policy for that type of expense. I think what we're talking about now was just a little bit for training refreshments, I'll call them, for lack of a better word.
You're talking more almost non-operating expenses, right?
I am, really, yeah. So those, we might need to think, put our thinking cap on more about what you would like to do with those as a board, to probably preapproval, but I don't know at what level and what we put in that category. But I think we.
Isn't, isn't the utilities already budgeted for through tax dollars? Doesn't Rory budget utilities for the jail under tax dollars?
For the jail, yes, but not for the range.
Well, the range wasn't supposed to be used in any tax dollars, correct?
Correct, that's why we're paying that out of room and board.
How much money you think estimated in the last five years out of that fund's been spent at the range?
I honestly couldn't tell you, Tom. I know the utilities bill's probably 300 or 400 a month, and then throw in the pest control, the internet, that kind of stuff out there, we're probably talking 500 or 600 a month out there on those type of expenses.
Other item, other items, like, say, the classroom?
Well, the classroom has been there for, what, 10 years now? There have been a couple other buildings built, and I honestly, I haven't been involved in that, so I don't know what the expenditures were on them.
I guess what I'm looking at here is, is a little bit longer term. The board seems, or some board members seem to forget that we have a huge healthcare increase coming. It's going to happen any day, and it's going to be up around the 350, 360,000. Then each year, that's going to compound even more. And currently, that's under tax dollars. So I think the idea with this was maybe put, seeing that it's healthcare for the inmates and it's room and board, maybe that fund should help try to share some kind of an offset in that account. I, I don't know if it'll make a difference, but right now, it's over a million dollars, I think, a year, 1.2 million on healthcare in that jail. And you're going to see this kind of an increase, and that's not even settled yet. They want it up in the range of, what, 30, 40%? So those are things that you got to look at in the future. I think what the board originally said when they voted for the resolution, three of them, is they weren't cutting the monies off, they were just wanted a total approval prior. And a good example is this lobby design phase. The question had to be asked, where did that money come from? Well, it came from the fund, and it wasn't even submitted yet to the ARPA, so that money was already spent. So I think that's all the board's asking for, but, well, I'll tell you what, it sure seems like a lot of money's already accounted for if you look at the big picture. And, you know, Tony, I think, has done a great job over the years, but boy, the, the cost has gone up drastically, and that healthcare is just a, that's, that's unbelievable. And obviously, that's our largest budget in the county is the operation of the jail, and obviously that's our largest budget in the county is the operation of the jail, and that's no fault to anybody. It's just, it is what it is, but I think every little bit will help if we allocate it in the right directions and have control, and, and in the end, like I've said on every issue up here, it is the board of supervisors, the ones that have to answer, uh, to everybody, and, uh, I think that's the reason why that decision was made that way. I, my intention was not to criticize anybody in jail, because they've got great people over there, great administrators, and the sheriff's doing an excellent job, but the bottom line is, we're the ones that are responsible for the monies, and we have to do it responsible, and, um, I, I don't know, and if that money's not being collected now, that's a shame, because that's gonna hurt to jail more than it is anybody else, uh, if that money's completely cut off, uh, 'cause it's, you know, it's easy today to say, well, we'll just budget for it, well, that's not the case, you can't always say you're gonna budget for it, because the question remains how much you wanna raise taxes, so, you know, it's kind of a loose word to be thrown out there, well, we'll just budget, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but anyway, it's, I, I think that's what the intent was.
Part of the point, Tom, is we don't wanna budget for it, we, we wanna keep paying these things out of here so we don't have to budget for it, and, I mean, if you use this money to offset medical expenses, then you're gonna have to backfill to pay these expenses anyway, so if you're, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, that's, we're not gaining anything there.
Well, and I understand that, and I appreciate what you're saying, but, you know, sometimes you have to make sacrifices, and if you want this, you may have to give up that, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but we don't wanna...
And it's not just your department, it's all the departments gotta take a look at that, because that money don't grow on trees, I can tell you that right now, and it's getting worse, and, I mean, we're in good shape right now, and we're lucky, but that good shape is only gonna last so long.
Nope, I completely agree with that.
And I'll be the first to admit, I think, early on, when we heard the NAF Care proposal, and you start thinking about where can we look for funding, and not that familiar with the forty percent and some of the costs and that type of thing, and that's on me, um, for not being more familiar with it, but I just thought perhaps we could look to the forty percent for some NAF Care relief, something in there that would help.
No, there's, I'm just looking, that's, that's where the discussion helps, though, if we, if we can discuss before we vote to act on things.
Definitely, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
Maybe we can get ARPA money to pay for that NAF Care.
Yeah. Well, I think we gotta keep looking, and that's coming up soon.
Any other questions, Linda?
No, I was gonna say, does any, I'm, I'm curious, just, not that the board wants to reverse their decision, but what they did, at some point in time, I guess we need to revisit or go back to this, I guess, I mean, this is a great to have the discussion, I appreciate having the discussion today, but I just thought too, um, as far as the action that we took six weeks ago, or whatever that time limit was, and going forward to help staff and different ones that are working through this, do we need to take another action? To, I guess, give some direction to the staff, and that's up to, like I say, the entire board, because it may not be, and they may not wanna do that, but...
I, I think it would be very helpful if we did have that, and I think maybe Nate and I could work together to revise the proposal based on your feedback today, or other feedback, and maybe bring it back to you.
Oh, that may be a good idea, and everybody could have a chance to look at the revised proposal, and then maybe we need another work session, or maybe have, like I say, bring it to an agenda item. So how does that sound to the other board members?
Well, you know, Linda, we're gonna be in budget about a month and a half, and maybe that's the place that we should be looking at it, um, with the work session and so forth, because then we'll know the whole picture, not little pieces, and what I mean by that is, we'll know what the whole county looks like and where we wanna go, so, you know, maybe that's a proper place where it should be, especially the month and a half we're gonna be in budget, so I, my opinion is, we oughta just kind of sit back, wait till budget, and then kind of look at the whole picture and see what we wanna do.
From a finance perspective, I, I understand that, that makes a lot of sense, I'm, I'm thinking from the staffing and handling the invoices and that type of thing, are we able to just wait till then? I mean, is that, I don't know.
Well, we do have a res, we do have a resolution, and it has to be approved by the board at this current time, so...
I know, I just meant, no, I know we have a resolution in place now, Tom, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, I'm just thinking if we wait into budget, I know we can have discussion, but we don't vote on budget till next year, February, or March, or whatever, and so waiting that long might cause some problems with the collection and that type of thing, is all I'm thinking, Nate, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, if we know we're kind of switching things back up, we'd be happy to get going back on the collections, and, I mean, if we're falling back under somewhat of what the old system was, we'd be happy to get going on that, which, the sooner the better on that from everyone's standpoint, really.
Otherwise, right now, we're just gonna, we're in the holding pack.
Kind of in a status quo, based on the vote from a few weeks ago.
Yeah, okay.
Craig.
Yeah, you wanna do?
Yes, sir.
Could I suggest that maybe we get, uh, feedback from, uh, Board Office, Sheriff Auditor's Office on questions that are lingering out there, you know, questions that have already arisen on how we should handle things, and maybe put together a list of what these are, and see if there are any things that the board would like to take any interim action on.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, okay.
Tom?
That sounds...
Thank you.
Treoka? Any comments?
No, it sounds like your proposal helps, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks very much for putting it together and coming today, yeah.
So, any reports or information from the board? I'd just like to comment about Veterans Day ceremony, you know, uh, living here in Blackhawk County my whole life, and, uh, watching TV after I got home from the ceremony down at, um, Veterans Memorial Hall, it was disappointing to see that our crowd, our crowd probably averages twenty to thirty people, and it's the same people, unless, if they're still alive, it's the older guys that show up, none of the younger guys show up, uh, without the firing squad, we probably had about ten people there at, for the ceremony, which is disturbing to think about, eighty years ago, those five guys on the wall give up their lives for this country, walk across the river, there's forty-five names on a monument that they give up their lives for this country, and yet people find it easy, oh, we gotta, I gotta day off, I'm, I'm not gonna come down and thank the veterans for what they've done. It's disturbing, really disturbing. I usually think Blackhawk County really stood up for their veterans, but I'm beginning to wonder if they do or not. I know Yolanda does a fantastic job out there making sure their vets are taken care of, but there's vets out there that are still hurting, there's vets that are, uh, suicidal, that you, they need to help, and that's what I was talking about last week, we need, we need to make sure that we help these guys and gals with their, you know, with their concerns, and on a daily basis, there's, it's not being done, unfortunately. Anything else come before us? Uh, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, short break. We'll be back in about ten, ten, ten after ten. Yep.
You're gonna hand your stuff out. We gotta, we need six...
Can you do me a favor? This is, I'm embarrassed to be asking this, um, you forwarded me that.
Here's the mic.
Hey, Mike, are we gonna take any action on this? Because I keep... No, no, I am staying, I was told to move up.
That's a good idea.
You gave me the...
Since you're wearing too many hats today.
Sent me an email with the questionnaire, was all, I think, that, that I believe is all, yeah.
Okay.
All right, but yeah, I, I am...
I'm a Dan side dog. I'm a Dan side dog. Tom and Dan side dog.
Him or Dan.
Sounds good.
Oh, my goodness. I said, we get to... So, can, they could sign on later, maybe, when we do the resolution? They can do an... What's that?
Chris is...
We need a date, yeah. Yeah, that's why I said we need one of them.
Hopefully we'll make it all...
Take off the rubber band yet? I guarantee it, should I? You just... Or you, or anybody who knows.
Linda? Is Kayla trying to get ahold of them?
I said get ahold of whichever one you think would be the easiest, but just get one of them.
Well, get them, get them both, and then when one of them leaves, we should... We should wait.
That's all right, we need them present, yeah.
Because Mike and I don't really count Josh either.
Yeah, that's what I, I...
I will give you this book.
Okay.
This has individual precincts here.
I've done it.
One, one, I've got waterloo one, one here.
Okay.
I'm gonna open this up. And...
So one, one of you will read, so this is where the precinct is?
Yep.
And then one of you will just...
As the results...
Yep.
And I will read, I should be reading from the same way that you have. I'll probably start by reading names, and then after...
You're reading, all right.
Always gonna be in the same order, and you'll just read down the ones, okay? Check them off if you like, or you could just... You can write in there. Yeah, if, if there's any question. And we will focus on it however we're...
Is there supper in the box as well?
Okay, yep. Well, he took, hey, Chris is on.
Who? Chris has been on.
Oh, he was already on, right?
Chris has been on.
Okay, Chris, thanks, thanks for being on, Chris.
Thanks, Chris, yeah, it's one of the other two, or both of the others.
That's true, because Linda's, Linda and Chris is only two.
Right.
Yeah, we got no resolution, no, no, mm-mm.
No election.
No election results, yeah.
So, by the way...
Yeah?
When you get to it, you'll have, so we have to, for general elections, report by precinct, so you'll have both precincts on the tape, so it will first read three, six, and then it will read five, one, and then in here I put them, um, I put them back to back, okay? So you'll go through three, six first, and then the next precinct behind you.
I think that was where it came from.
Okay, so one of these two...
Not, they're all on the same one. But I highlighted it.
That's good, that will, hopefully.
Okay, so it starts with three, six, and then when that's done, it gets to five. There it is, okay?
It's been off to your math and out to the other.
We'd be in trouble, I'd be in trouble.
You don't have to worry about anything in here, it's just the right end, the zeros.
Yeah, that's true.
I need it about as easy as possible to clip it right there.
So I don't have to worry about this, just grab the one that's clipped?
Yep.
And then...
And you're just reading down through the results.
So I start with Frank at two sixty, it's, yeah, two, it is two sixty.
We can't start yet.
No, no, I know, I'm just doing this for the...
Rehearsing.
Yeah, of course, I'm waiting, sure, thank you.
So this is what we, I upload all the results and this is what comes out from the...
Denise does.
Results in the computer. I print off an election night, and I have to...
So start with that, the total paper sheets, is that what? Okay.
And then Linda will only, whoever has a book will read through, so you're just opening up the tape, and starting at the top, and she'll read down the results, so she'll say Franken, two twelve, grasses, sixty-nine, right into, and then there's one, and making sure that they all match up, and that's sort of finding the results. Essentially, we're saying what the machines gave set out of the precinct to buy.
I might start off, say, Franken, grassly, and then, like I say, right ends, but pretty soon we'll have, like, two twelve, six thirty-two, and you'll just be going through, so it won't be everybody's name, so...
She does, yes, we just do, we had to do all that and put them back in, and now she just does that for us. Did he? Okay, I was gonna say, 'cause he can drive, and just...
So, I'm, I'm sorry, did you get in contact with him?
Yeah, Dan just replied that he'll be on.
So we're watching for him to come on. We don't do the resolution till at the end, anyway, so I just say... How many provisionals at the end, yeah. Whoops, sorry. Please.
There he is.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Back in session?
Back in session.
All right.
Okay, we're gonna start with the canvas now, so thank you very much for all participating and helping out today.
Sure, and, um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to announce that there were sixteen provisional ballots that were rejected and not counted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Starting with Franken, two twelve, six thirty-two, two, one, six, two ten, six thirty-three, one, one, eight, one eighty-four, six forty-six, seventeen, zero, zero, six, one seventy-five, six fifty, zero, zero, twenty-eight, two eighty-four, five forty-three, zero, one, twenty-five. Two forty-nine, five seventy-seven, zero, zero, twenty-seven, one sixty-three, six fifty-six, zero, zero, thirty-four, two fifty-eight, five seventy-four, zero, zero, twenty-one, six eighty-four, two, zero, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, one seventy-one, five thirty-five, six four zero, five two, one eight five, seven twenty-three, two, zero, one twenty-eight.
I'm gonna continue driving, if I lose you, I'll just, uh, sign back in.
Thank you. One sixty-eight, one seventy-one, five thirty-five, six four zero, five, two, one five.
Yeah, that looks like a six, it's hard to tell.
Maybe I should have you read. Bird, one, nine, over, zero, six.
I think she probably will show you, but didn't see... Five, zero, one, one eighty-five.
One thirty-four, one... You're still on the Barclays, Lester, don't worry.
Yes, yes, the first one, I'm sorry, the Barclays.
These are your right-ins, five, two, it's because you, you, um, you have a second write-in, because there was two write-ins, so it's, you just have the total write-ins, and then over vote one. You all have to look at that.
Do you want us to mark it here or there, or what to help you, 'cause I was gonna say, just because they are...
Two twelve, yes, seventy-eight, one right.
That's interesting, you don't... Yeah, you can just mark it on...
Like, just a dash for you to look.
Two thirteen, yes.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
Nope, you're a lucky person here, okay, seven twenty-three, two, zero, and twenty-eight, okay, and we're done with that. Four sixty-one, fourteen, zero, three seventy-eight, four twenty-one, nineteen, zero, four thirteen, one twenty-four, zero, zero, forty-two, one four zero, one, zero, four four, seventeen, zero, two oh seven, zero, zero, thirty-three, one fifty-one, zero, zero, thirty-four, sorry, one sixty-four, one, zero, fifty-nine, four sixty-nine, four forty-nine, two, zero, seven eighty-seven, four forty-six, four twenty-three, four eighty-seven, three sixty-five, three...
Now we used to do the...
Now that I got you acclimated.
Three twenty-three, one seventy-three, one, ninety-eight, three eighty-one, one eighty-six, two, two eighty-four, four zero three, four six seven, two, two eight one.
Two five nine, two seven one, zero, two one eight nine, nine, eight.
One sixty, zero, two ninety-seven, three seventy-eight, one sixty-four, three ten, three ninety-two, one ninety-nine, zero, three zero two, three eighty-five, one fifty-nine, zero, three oh nine, three seven six, one six five, zero, three one two, four twenty-three, one forty-seven, zero, two eight three, four twenty-eight, one forty-three, zero, two one two, six thirty-eight, twenty-eight, three twenty-five.
Good check there, okay.
Here we go.
That's the entire.
Two one two, two nine one.
You're, as I said, right, it's as bad as the president.
Three eight seven.
Same, it's just smaller numbers.
Doesn't get any easier.
No, but you found the questionable one.
Two nine two, two five.
Yeah, it is interesting, I guess I hadn't thought that.
Two, three, two, two, three, eight.
Well.
Four eight, two, two, one, two, three, nine.
It says forty four precinct, two.
Yep, yeah.
Two thirty eight, one twenty.
Big Creek, Spring Creek, and the first number is a.
Alright, total paper, two twenty five, one oh. Franken.
Totally, yeah, final.
Two six three.
Franken, two eighty three, six twelve, zero, zero, eight. Two eight seven, six eleven, two, zero, three.
Forty eight, nine.
Two thirty two, six five zero, seventeen, zero, zero, four.
Two seventy three.
Two three zero, six four four, zero, zero, two nine. Three four zero, five three six, zero, zero, two seven.
Over vote.
Three one two.
If you overload a race, like, in those cases where they're overboard for them.
Two zero two, six eight, one, zero, three two. Three zero nine, five six nine, zero, zero, two five. Two five one, six four nine, zero, zero, thirty three.
They can override that, I don't care.
Twenty eight, five one eight, six three eight, six six, two eleven. Seven seven nine, eight, zero, one two four. Five five six, six four, one five, zero, three twenty two.
That's from one seventy two, right in five.
Ah, this is Ward three.
Three thirty.
One one three four.
One fourteen, one, zero, twenty eight.
One two.
Eighty two, zero, zero, six.
Two four three, one eight one.
One thirty six.
Trauma.
Eighty one, zero, zero, twenty seven.
Right in two eight one, I know.
Five twenty seven, four, zero, one seven, twenty three.
Two four nine.
Five zero eight, five zero four, seven eight, four four eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three five, two, zero, nine.
One seven four, nine.
Four ninety eight, one sixty nine, zero, two thirty seven. Four sixty four, one eighty three, zero, two.
Is the write-in something?
Four eighty seven, one fifty six, two five nine.
B one three.
Four sixty six, one five nine, zero, two seven eight. Four nine six, one four four, four six two. Four nine four, one four one, zero, two six eight.
Uh, two two oh, two two eight, two four, two oh eight, two one two.
Four sixty eight, one sixty eight, two seven three.
Two, two one.
Zero, one two seven, zero, one three five, two five six.
Two and seven four, two one time.
Two forty eight, six twenty one, one ninety four, zero.
Your mic's.
Yes, one twenty.
No.
Six.
Two three one, nine oh.
Yes.
Two three one, nine three, two two seven, nine five, two one six, one oh five.
No checks in that one.
Two forty.
We didn't have any checks or questions in that.
One twenty, no, nine twenty nine.
Yeah, I bet you do, yeah.
Yes.
Black Fox Cedar Falls Lincoln, okay.
Forty two, over, zero.
One sixty seven. Which Franken's first number is nine two? I think you've got one such one.
Yeah.
Four. Two thousand and twenty two. Nine two, two seven six, zero, zero, two. One zero three, two six three, one, zero, zero. Eighty one, two seventy nine, eight, zero, zero, two. Seven eight, two eighty three, one, zero.
Exactly.
One twenty four, two thirty six.
Alright, it's right.
And no right.
One twelve, two six five, zero, zero.
Zero. B three two, three seven seven, zero.
Zero one nine.
Two six three four.
One sixteen, two forty two, zero, zero, twelve. Nine.
Are we running that for?
Zero, zero, one two. One two, three twenty three, two, zero, forty five. Seventy four, seventy eight, two twenty three, two sixty six. Little point has two teams.
Yep. Ward four precinct three.
Three twenty three, one, one.
Five. So this one is.
Two seventeen, three, zero, one five zero, one nine, three. One hundred and twenty five.
Total paper, one eighty six, Franken, one sixty.
Okay, that was four writers.
Yep. Eighty eight, one, zero, three two.
Four seven.
One ten, zero, zero, forty four, seventy nine, one, zero, sixteen.
Two, three.
Ninety nine, zero, zero, twenty one. Two thirty one, twenty eight, one, zero, two nine, zero. Two oh nine, two eleven, two twenty seven, one seventy nine, one seventy nine, one, five, eight, thirty nine. Two zero seven, five nine, two, one, zero, two. One ninety six, sixty four, zero, one ten. Two oh eight, fifty zero, one twelve.
Eight seven.
One ninety nine, fifty two, zero, one nineteen.
Nay.
One ninety five, fifty three, one, one twenty one, one ninety six, forty seven, zero, one twenty seven, one ninety five, fifty one, zero, one twenty four.
Dotser.
One eighty eight, four, zero, one twenty eight, two one five, forty two, zero, one thirteen.
Seventeen.
Forty five, zero, one fifty nine, two sixty three, seventy one, zero, thirty six.
Ward one, three seven, five, zero, five, one, over.
Was that better?
Hensman, seventy nine.
Oh, I'm glad you.
Right in five, one nine four, two two nine, one. One nine seven, two two nine, zero.
Right in three.
One eight four, zero, three six six.
Williams, one six.
Oh, yeah, right.
I know, it's hard to tell, yeah.
Zero.
I'm sure for you, whatever she wants.
Two four one, zero.
She should give her.
Two nine, two fifteen, zero.
Seven, thirty seven.
Seven, three two one, seven, zero.
Forty one.
Two one nine.
Your pointer two, Gil.
Two seven, zero, one one.
Right in zero, right in zero.
Two five.
Zero nine, zero, five nine, under.
Six nine, one four six.
I had five ninety six.
This book's awful.
Oh, sorry, five ninety six.
Eight two O's.
I'll be.
No problem. Just wanna make sure that I.
Um.
Four five, two one three.
Alright, we're on the map.
Six hundred two, zero, zero.
Yes, seventy four, no, fifty.
Five nine zero.
Two oh nine, two one eight, two oh nine, one nine three, two oh one.
No.
Two right.
Over.
Two forty six, six forty four, one.
Two four two.
Yes.
Four hundred fourteen.
Two one one, zero nine eight.
Zero twenty.
Two three seven.
Yes, seventy six, no.
Twenty seven.
Over.
Two three zero, six forty seven, zero, zero, twenty five. Three eight six, four two. One, zero, twenty eight.
Yes.
Two nine seven, five seventy seven, zero, nine thirty eight. Two sixty six, two forty six, four seventy two.
Two four nine, under.
One three three.
Yes.
Seventy seventy four, eight, zero, one three zero. Five sixty five.
No.
Right in zero, three thirty two.
Five sixty eight.
Three, none. One six, two three, two five, five seven one, one.
Zero.
Three seven, five six.
No.
Two two seven.
One, zero, sixty three. Nine, zero, four thirty seven.
Two seven six.
Twenty four, zero, zero, fifty six.
Total paper, one ninety.
Five one nine, four one three, eight.
And they don't.
Four eighty six, four seven.
Seven eight.
Four sixty seven, four twenty five.
Three one nine, five.
Four twenty, four two, zero.
Two eight six, two five O's.
Sheer.
Six one.
Uh, four ninety nine, one seventy four.
Right in.
Nine six oh, zero. Five eight.
Forty eight, one seventy seven.
Miller, one oh eight.
Zero.
Five seven.
Right in.
Four ninety four, one fifty seven.
Five eight one, five four four.
One two nine.
Four sixty eight, one seventy, zero, two seventy four.
Five seven two six.
Four eighty, one fifty eight, zero.
Everybody has hilarious.
You can keep going.
Okay, so, so I'm on my way to five eight one, five.
Yeah.
Four seven three. Five one six, five two three, four nine two, four seven one, four eight.
Forty one, one seventy six, zero, two eighty five. Five hundred twenty, one forty nine, zero, two one two. Five zero seven, one fifty one, zero, two four. Six twenty two, one eighty nine, zero, one oh one.
Zero, one oh.
Alright, I started glasses. Wait twice to make sure I'm seeing the numbers right.
Be awake.
At least they're, at least they're fairly good print. Do with what?
Hensman, one twenty six, right in four, over zero, under sixteen. Smith.
Yeah, come on, just rubbing it out.
Five, over zero, under forty eight.
Oh, goodness.
Williams, one thirty six, right in three, over zero, under fifty one.
This is Ward two precinct.
And then you, yeah, yeah.
Two three oh, four oh.
Thank you, thank you for your help, yeah, sixty four.
Zero.
Sixty four, two eighty one, two, zero, one.
One.
Fifty nine, two eighty eight, zero, zero, one. Forty nine, two ninety.
Seven one, one.
Five, zero, one.
Seven one, three five eight.
Fifty two, two eighty six.
Two four eight, zero, three.
One, zero, four.
One nine one, fourth.
German.
Zero seven.
Yes.
Seven one, four, five, eight, four one.
Over.
Three zero three, forty five.
Thirty three, two ninety seven, zero, zero, eight.
Zero, under fifty.
Eighty two, two sixty.
Yes, one oh four, zero, five.
Three, four.
Sixty six.
Zero, under.
Five three two.
Yes, one oh one, no, thirty nine.
Three nine, three, sixteen.
Eighty three, zero, zero, seven.
No.
Three thirteen, zero, zero, thirty five.
Eight.
One seven two, six, zero, one seven.
Three six, three four.
One seventy one, four, zero, one seventy one.
Yes, ninety six.
One fifty seven, zero, zero, sixty one.
Seven.
Seven, zero, one twenty three.
No.
Seven writings.
One, eight, zero, zero, three eight.
Yes.
Three seven nine, one two two.
One ninety eight, four five, five, zero. Zero, three zero.
No.
One ninety two, one eighty eight, two hundred six.
Yes.
Seven, one, zero, zero, twenty six.
Under.
Two.
One seventy nine, seventy.
Nine, two, nine.
Ninety four.
Three six.
One seventy two, sixty six, zero, four.
Kind of out of here.
One seventy.
Just give it all the.
Seventy.
As I say, here she comes, alright.
Four oh two.
Oh my gosh.
I'm telling you. See what it does.
One hundred nine.
Don't be pocketing.
I'm obsessed.
Sixty seven, one, one hundred seven. One sixty, sixty nine, zero, one. One seventy seven.
Alright, this is.
Zero, one hundred.
Ward four precinct four.
One sixty five.
Total paper, three sixteen, Franken, one forty five.
Three, sixty, zero.
Nine, right in zero.
One oh eight, two oh two, zero, one, one, three, one nine, two.
Eight, zero, twenty.
Sixty seven, nine, zero, over zero, under.
No, it is, it was interesting. Same. It's the first one we had, but. Sorry, I'm distracted.
Nine zero, zero, right in.
Miller, one thirty two.
One nine seven, zero, four.
I love you there.
Sam.
One fifty seven. Three five, one seven nine, zero.
Right in.
One eight one, two one eight.
Under two.
Two two five.
Fitzgerald, one, zero.
Smith. Seven nine nine.
Right in one.
Excuse me, Mike Franken, two sixty seven.
Rewrite.
Three seven eight, one, zero, four.
Five one.
Two seventy eight, four six, two, zero, two.
Three oh two.
Seventeen, three eighty six, thirty five, one, zero, five.
Two eight.
Two twenty six, eighty nine, nine, one, zero, sixteen.
Five one.
Three thirty one, three zero, four, zero, zero, seven.
Two oh nine, two oh four.
Two eighty nine, three forty three, one, zero, nine.
One.
Two thirteen, four fourteen, zero, zero, fifty eight.
Seventy eight.
Eight, zero, nine.
Two one four.[1411.21] Two one four.
Three, one, zero.
Two two nine.
One hundred five, twenty-four, zero, two fourteen.
Two eight.
Two eighteen, two twenty-four, two eighty-seven, three sixty-eight.
Two two seven.
Zero, one eighty-one.
Two two two.
Four ninety-seven, one, zero, one thirty-six, three ninety-seven, seventeen. Zero, two twenty-eight, three ninety-four, eighteen, zero, two hundred thirty.
Williams, one ninety-four, writing thirteen.
Three fifty-six, three thirty-three, five, zero, five nine zero. Three eleven, one twenty, three oh eight, two seventy-nine, two eighteen, one.
Two four, four.
Three six nine nine, three eleven, one fifty-five, one, one seventy-five, two eighty-eight, one sixty-three, zero, one ninety-one. Three hundred eight, one thirty-four, one twenty-nine, eight, zero, three hundred five.
Two four, four, zero, six. Over zero.
Three eleven, one twenty-seven, two, two hundred two.
Six four. Yes.
Three hundred thirteen, one thirty-one.
Three two nine.
One four.
Two seven four.
Three hundred thirteen, one twenty-four, zero, two hundred.
Two one four, one six.
Two eighty-nine, one forty-seven, zero, two hundred.
Sixty.
Three fifty-three, one thirteen, zero, one seventy-six.
Three one.
Three seven, zero, one, zero, eight.
Three two eight, nine.
One six four.
Two nine nine.
Twenty-three, one six seven, zero, fifty-two.
Two four oh, two pi one, two three five, two hundred, three. Two zero.
Yeah.
Three three, one oh two.
Yeah.
At one six two, one oh nine. Zero. Zero nine.
Damn, I didn't think.
Nine seven, one oh four. Zero. Zero nine five. Sixty-four. Two seven five, ninety.
Okay, Mike Franken, five forty-three, four sixty-one, one, zero, four. Five fifty-four, four fifty-one, zero, zero, four.
B two two.
Five hundred five, four sixty-two, thirty-five, one, zero, six. Four eighty-seven, four ninety-three, one, zero, twenty-eight. Five seventy-eight, four hundred eleven, one, zero, nineteen.
Ward two.
Five forty-three, four thirty-seven, two, zero, twenty-seven.
Two oh four, two two.
Four seventy-eight, four eighty-nine, two, zero, thirty. Five one two, four hundred ten, one, zero, sixteen. Four hundred sixteen, thirty-three, zero, two eighty-eight.
Four now.
Four eighty-one, four eighty-eight, seventy-two, four eighty, five, one seventy-two. Seven hundred four, thirty-three, zero, two seventy-two. Seven hundred eight, twenty, zero, two eighty-one.
Fifty-four, one.
Seven hundred four, twenty-three, zero, two eighty-four.
One, two, one, one nine, oh, five, three.
Seven hundred eight, five seventy-nine, fourteen, zero, eight, seventeen. Five, twelve, forty-eight, four ninety-six.
Two nine one.
Four eighty-nine, twelve, fifty, thousand, five hundred thirteen.
Two thirty-four.
Five forty-two, four zero, 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 seven.
Two oh nine.
Four eighty-one, two forty-four, zero, two eighty-four.
Fifty-five.
Five hundred five, two hundred three, zero, three hundred one. I think they'll change that, just change that up. This is like, I don't say that. Four ninety-five, two hundred six, zero, three hundred eight. Five twenty-two, one seventy-five, zero, three twelve.
Two oh.
Five hundred thirteen, one eighty-eight, two, three hundred. Five twenty-four, one seventy-three, zero, three twelve. Hundred ninety, one ninety-five, one, three twenty-three. Five hundred four, one sixty-five, zero, three hundred.
Five four.
Five eighty-nine, one sixty-six, zero.
That depends on when I'm awake.
Five, zero, seventy-six.
So excited about doing this, but I couldn't sleep last. I could have gone off at any time.
This is Ward two precinct five, two two two, two four three, zero. Two two six, two four two, zero. Nine, six, two, six, four, eleven, zero.
One, two.
Whatever, does that sound right?
Two four four, two one two, one.
One, two, one, two.
Two two four, two nine, zero. One eight nine. Eight six four, zero.
Four eight zero.
Two five, two two seven. Two eight eight, one six zero.
Four eight, two fifty-five, one, zero, nine. Four eighty-nine, two forty-five, one, zero, ten. Four fifty-one.
No, eight.
Okay, yeah.
Looked like it.
Four thirty-one, two nine, one, zero, two four. Four ninety-six, two twenty-two, one, zero.
Wait, oh. Paper, four thirty-nine.
Two thirty-two, zero, zero, thirty-one.
Zero, zero, six.
Four thirty-six, two seventy-six, zero, zero, thirty-three.
Two two three.
Four ninety-one, two twenty-nine, zero, zero, twenty-five. Five seventy-three, twenty-two, zero, one fifty. Four thirty-nine, four twenty-seven, two zero nine, two thirty-one, three, zero, one twelve.
Oh, that's.
Four sixty-four, thirteen, zero, two sixty-eight. Five seventy-five, twenty, one, one.
That does make it hard to read that tape.
And, zero, one sixty.
So, are we judges now?
We are, Matthew McMurm.
Okay, two four four, one eleven. Three three nine, one oh.
Ninety-six.
Two three eight, one oh.
Three sixty-eight, three sixty-five.
Two eight, one oh one.
Three sixty.
Two five one, eight oh.
Three ninety-one.
Two four nine.
Thousand eight, fifteen.
Five two.
Three oh six, two one nine, zero, two twenty.
Two five.
Three hundred one, two fifteen, zero, two twenty-nine.
Two eight.
Seven thirty-three, zero, two fifty-one. Three twenty-five, one sixty-one, zero, two forty-four.
Two two six.
Three thirty-nine, one forty-one, two, two sixty-three.
Zero, three seventy-three.
Three forty-three, one.
Two ten. One sixteen, two seven seven.
Three ninety-two.
Seven two, seven zero, seven zero.
Two sixty-four.
Zero. One three nine, two nine eight.
Zero, zero.
Three. Eleven. One three seven, two nine oh, zero. Two nine, two two.
Three seventy-four, one twenty-nine, zero.
Two four nine. Two five.
Three zero nine, three seven two, zero, sixty.
One three three, two nine nine, four, zero. Two two nine, one two three, seven, zero. Two five eight.
A lot of practice spending the same amount of hours.
Two four four. One three three, one one six, two four four, two nine one, two. Nine, zero.
Wouldn't pass, no, I'm not sure I wouldn't have thought of that. But be like, well, what kind of that?
Two five seven. Eight, two five seven, two three one, zero.
I ask a blurry after something.
Two three four, two three four. Two two five, two one, two one nine.
It is, I know it. Two eighty-nine, nine seven, zero, zero, three.
Two five eight.
Two, nine, zero.
Two two six, seventy six, four, five, one three six.
Fourteen, zero.
Three, two three two, six six.
Three seventy-four.
Four nine, six seven.
Zero, zero.
Two four three, six eight.
The seven.
Two four seven.
One, zero, one.
Two one, seven eight.
Two seventy-four, ninety-six, zero, zero, twenty-two.
Two seven four, fifty-five.
One, zero, one, zero.
Eight eight. Two oh five, one oh eight, seven, zero, five, seven.
Zero, zero, four.
One fifty.
Eight, eighteen, seven. Zero, sixty-three.
One ninety, one sixty-two, one, two, one, zero, seven, eight. Two twenty-eight, one twenty-seven. Zero, four.
Two forty.
Two oh four.
Zero.
Zero, zero. Okay, this is, uh, Ward three precinct. One sixty.
Three eleven, three.
Sorry, I was in the wrong spot. Now I'm ready.
Okay, two two oh, two seven six, zero. Two two five, two seven oh, zero. One nine four, two nine oh, one three zero. Seven, two nine, zero. Six oh.
One forty-nine.
Two, two. Two three eight, two five one, zero, one.
One seven.
One nine five, nine three.
Zero, one twenty-four.
Two four two, zero. Three one four, seventeen. Two sixty. Three oh six. Five, ten, zero, nine, nine. One eight four, one seven oh, two three two, two nine eight.
Fifty-seven.
Two oh seven, one eighty-one, two. Three eight seven.
Three, one.
Eight two four, nine.
One fifty-seven.
Three one seven eleven.
One fifty-three.
Three oh nine, two seven six. Seven. Two. Two six nine, two seven oh, two seven four, two five oh, two six. One eighty-one, ninety-six.
One forty-eight. One seventy-two.
Two seven seven, one oh.
Zero, one five six.
Two five one, one twelve.
One fifteen, two twenty-seven, zero, forty-seven.
One. Two six four, nine two. One. Two seven five. Two seven six.
What?
This is like my.
Two six one nine.
This is old.
Zero. Two nine nine. Two one seventy-eight, eighty-four. Two nine seven, seven six.
One seventy-two, eighty-five.
Thirty-two one, one four three. Two oh four, seventy.
Behind the clock. It's alright, my eyes just need a break anyway. Four nineteen.
One thirty-seven, zero.
Four twenty-four, one, zero, six. Four nineteen, four twenty, one, zero, five. Three seventy-three.
Waterloo, four five.
Four, one, zero, four. Three seventy, four fifty-four, one, one, twenty-four. Four forty-six, three seventy-eight, zero.
Two oh nine, one seventy-three, one.
Four twenty-one.
One nine, one six two. Two seven five. One eight nine, one seventy-three.
Four fifty-two, one, zero, two.
Five. One eight six, one eight eight, zero. Two eight, one pi one, zero.
Eighty-four, one seventeen. One, zero, thirty-eight.
One eight.
Three sixty-two, three forty-eight, three forty.
Other times.
Forty-seven.
Two two seven, one five oh, zero.
Six.
Two seven nine, one, two three, two seven nine, one seven.
Eight seventy-four.
One seven six, one five two, one three seven, and one seventy-three.
Eight eighty-three, two twenty.
Two five, seven. Two seven six, twelve.
Zero, six nine four.
Two six nine, ten. Two four four, two oh seven, three.
Hundred seven, four twenty-seven.
One eight eight, two oh one, one eight six, one eight six, two oh six.
Two eight, four, six, two ninety. Zero, two thirty.
Two oh seven, ninety-nine.
Ninety-two.
One nine six, one oh oh. Two oh three, ninety-three.
Four hundred three, three seventy-three.
One oh.
One, two sixty.
Two oh eight, eight.
Four hundred, one seventy-two, zero, two seventy.
Nine, nine, five.
Four hundred twenty, one four eight.
Three, two two three, eighty-one.
Four twenty, four forty-seven, one.
Two seven, two four seven.
Four eleven, one fifty-two, one, two eighty-six. Three ninety-two, one seventy-one, zero, two eighty-seven.
Yep, Larry.
Four fifty-eight, one, six, zero, zero.
No, we're done, we're done.
One thirty-two, zero, two fifty-five. Four hundred fifty, three twenty-eight, three two.
We're gonna head start on the signatures.
Yes.
Okay, two two nine, one two seven, zero. Two one eight, one zero one. Two oh seven, one three two, fifteen, zero. Here. Two oh seven, one four one.
Sometimes they need the people.
Two five three, one oh one, one.
Right. Was it?
Sorry.
Secretary of State.
Secretary of State, two oh seven, one four one, zero.
Looking twice and having to look hard, so.
Uh, two five three, one oh one, one. Two two seven, one two four, zero.
So this.
One nine nine, one four nine, zero.
We'll agree that.
Two three five, one one seven. So good. Two seven four, five. Waterloo, Ward five, precinct. Two one three, one four four, nine six, one three eight, six. Two three eight, eleven.
We'll just look at that little one, I mean, very seldom does something come up too, and not that it's a big deal, but.
Two two six, one seven nine, one. Three nine nine. One five six, one six eight, one six seven, one seven two, eight six. rewrite. One eight two, eighty-seven. Three seven eight, eighty-two, nine. One eight seven, seven.
Three forty-two, four eighty.
Eight one, seven two.
Zero two.
Two oh six, five.
Four eighty-three, one, zero, two.
Eight seven, seven, three.
Three forty-seven, four eighty-four, twenty-nine. One, zero, seven, three, four hundred. Five one, zero, zero, fourteen.
Two one eight.
Four nine, four hundred forty.
Two one, two, one, fourteen.
Three fifty-seven, four fifty-three, zero, zero, fifteen. Two eighty-five, five hundred twenty, zero, zero, twenty. Three sixty-eight, four forty-nine, zero, zero, sixty-eight. Zero two.
Trying to trick you out.
Two, zero, one.
Zero.
Three twenty-one, four eighty-seven, zero, zero, fourteen.
Five seventy-four.
Three hundred.
Zero. This is waterloo three four. One eight three, one one four, two. One seven nine, one twenty-nine, one.
Zero, one six.
One eight oh, one oh nine, ten, zero. Two seven eight, one one three, one. One nine eight, ninety-four, eight. Eight eight, one oh six, one, seven eight, two seven three, one two oh, one. One nine five, ninety-seven, and one.
Two.
Two three one, nine eight. Four six. Two oh nine. One six six, one three four, nine. One two four, rewrite. Four, two oh oh, five, one two eight, five, two two five, five.
Four forty-six, one seventy-seven, one.
One eight eight, one four seven.
Four sixty-seven, one thirty-one.
One three two, one four three, one three six, one three nine, one five six.
Two forty.
Three.
Four fifty-seven.
Five four, seven seven. Four four, seven six.
Four fifty-eight, one, zero, two thirty.
Oh. One twenty-seven.
Four sixty-five, one eighteen, six.
Four six, one eight, ninety. Yes, six.
I knew that's what you meant to say.
Well, I mean, when I get dancing, you know, I kinda lose it.
Exactly.
One six, one six four. One five five, six nine. One four eight, six five. One four eight, seven four. One seven one, six four. One seven five, six two. Waterloo, four five, three six six.
Alright.
Ward three precinct five.
I was just thinking, like. Somebody had to go to lunch at eleven forty-five, and I said, like, oh.
Alright, next one. Two seven eight. Two eight seven, zero. Two seven eight, two eight four, zero. Two three five, two nine one, thirty-four, zero.
Three seventy-one.
Two four seven, three oh five, zero.
Zero seven.
Three oh six, two four eight, zero. Two seven four, two seven eight, zero.
Twenty-five.
Two three five, three one two, zero.
One.
Two eight nine, two five six.
Three eighteen.
Three seven four, four nine eight. Three, six eight, fifteen. Two eight, one nine six, two nine nine. Three oh seven, three, two six. Four oh four, seven.
Three hundred three.
Three seven.
Five sixty-four. Zero, zero, one, seven. Four hundred four.
Three two six, two nine eight, two seven two, three.
Forty-five, thirty-three.
Two seven five, two eight eight, two seven four, two five six, six six eight. Rewrite.
Four forty-five.
Two nine seven, one five three. Two seven oh, one five six. Nine oh, one two nine. Two seven oh, one three seven. Nine five, one two eight. Two way four, one three three. Two seven five, one four eight. Two seven five. Three one two, one one.
Five thirty-five.
Three one eight. Three.
Four, zero.
Three five one, one six. Three thirteen, six, zero.
Zero, four forty-nine, four twenty-nine.
Seven.
Six, fifteen, two thousand seventy-eight.
And now we will do three, six, eight, five, zero.
Four eighty-one, one eighty, zero, two ninety-three.
Two forty-one.
Four eighty-three, one forty-two, thirty-two. Two sixty-four. Four eighty-two, forty-five.
How many zeros is this, zero? Zero, zero.
Four eighty.
One five five, seven nine, zero. One five eight, seven seven, zero. One four eight, seven nine, eight, zero, one, one nine, eighty-four. One two three oh, two, one six three, seven three, zero, three nine, nine five, one six oh, seven three. One zero, five, one, two six. One seven nine.
Zero, twenty-six.
That was, check it thirty-one. Check sixty-two, one seven, seven two. One four five, one one one. Sixty-five, eighty-five. Forty-one, eighty-four. Zero, five seven, five. One eight one, one. One seven nine, one. Seven. One four nine, one two seven, one. One one five, one two two, one two oh, one four, one three seven, one. One two five, sixty-eight. One one five, seventy-four. Two sixty-three. Um, then I guess that's all words.
No.
One three one, five oh. One three six, five oh. One two three, five two. Total paper. One nine, five seven. One three eight, four eight. One fifty. Five, five, zero, zero.
Three four zero, five zero four, one, zero, three.
Five precinct.
Three fifty-five, five zero nine, one, zero, three.
Zero.
Three hundred.
Eighty-nine, eighty-nine.
Five twenty-two.
One nine.
That's my book. I have an eighty-nine.
Five twenty-four.
Thirty-nine, sixty-nine. Oh. You're right.
One thirty-three.
Those ones.
Zero.
Yeah.
Are great.
I guess I was more excited about.
Exactly.
Ninety-three, sixty-five.
Nine zero.
Eighty-four, sixty-seven.
Zero.
Six zero.
Twenty-seven.
Zero.
Three seventy-six.
Seventy-eight, seventy-four.
Zero.
Zero. Ninety-two, sixty-one, zero. Ninety-two, sixty-one, zero.
Two seventy-eight.
Eighty-one, twenty-nine.
Two ninety-one.
One ninety. One ninety-nine, sixty-two.
Five hundred six.
Zero. One oh five, nine. One oh three.
Three twenty-seven.
Seven. Seven.
One ninety-four.
Six seven.
Five thirty-nine, fifteen, two two, two ninety-four.
Nine. One hundred and two.
Seventeen.
One oh five, five, two seven, five, six.
Six.
Zero, five.
Four eighty-four.
Eighty-seven.
Two forty-three, seven twenty-two.
Three.
Four thirty-six.
Zero.
Four twenty.
Seventy-five, seventy-five, eighty-two, seventy-three.
Eighty-three, two eleven.
Eighty. Right. One ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
One eighty-four.
Four.
Five, four oh, zero. Seventy-nine, forty-two.
Fifty-nine.
Ninety-six, thirty-seven.
One fifty-four.
Eighty-two, forty-four. Eighty-six.
Seven.
Zero. Thirty-nine, thirty-three.
Four thirty-four.
One ninety. Eighty-seven. Zero.
Eighty-eight.
Four thirty-seven. Two oh three, eight oh.
Seven.
Zero.
Zero.
One eighty-six.
Two eight seven.
One eighty-five.
Four thirty-six.
Zero. One nine, thirty-three. Two oh eight. Seventy-eight, thirty-zero.
Forty-one.
There we go.
Two oh eight.
Zero. Two hundred forty, one seventeen.
Six nine.
Two ninety.
One twenty.
Four hundred eight, one forty-one.
Ah. Seventy-three. Zero.
Wow.
Seventy-one, ninety-eight.
Twenty.
Two seventy.
All the papers.
Okay, so you, you sign versus zero.
Okay. Started reading over and over again. You're over. I know.
Had an intermittent tickle today. Evansdale, more than one.
I sent a message to say, do you want to reschedule lunch or just go later? And I must have left the microphone on and it has all.
So is this one?
That's all the number size.
One thirty, one seventy.
It's like, that's crazy.
Zero.
Let me all that.
No, I'll take that out.
Two, zero, two.
Three fifty-two.
One nine.
Four forty-two, one, zero, one. Three fifty-nine, one thirty-nine.
One eighty-seven.
Zero, three.
Eight.
Three eighteen.
One thirty-eight.
One fifty-seven. One, zero, four.
Seven.
Three hundred nine.
One twenty-nine.
Sixty-nine, zero, zero, eight, two.
Zero.
Three eighty-eight, three nine one.
One oh seven.
One, zero, sixteen.
Zero.
Three sixty-eight, four hundred seven.
One thirty-eight.
Twenty.
One sixty.
Three hundred eight, four sixty-six, zero, zero.
One twenty-four. One seventy-two.
Three seventy-two.
Nine.
Four hundred five.
Ninety-five.
Nineteen.
Eighty-two.
Five.
One forty-six.
Twenty-two.
One seventy-nine.
Play ahead, Mary.
Three hundred four.
Yeah, now your certificate of elections, uh, you don't need to sign them. But you need to sign.
Six ninety-eight.
Have it.
Six, zero, one seventy-one.
So just sign. One side, you might not even buy zero.
One, two fifty-five.
Twenty.
Five twenty-seven.
Six nine.
Ten.
Yeah.
Five fifty-nine.
Zero.
Two fifty-five. Four fifty-nine.
One fifty-five.
Two, zero.
Seventy-five. One thirty-six.
Thirteen. Three ninety-six, four hundred two.
Zero. 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 Three.
Thirty-five, one nine eight zero. Four nineteen, one.
One seventy-nine.
Zero.
One seventy.
Four fourteen.
One seventy-nine.
Two. Zero, two nineteen.
Sixty-five.
Four seventeen, one thirty-eight.
Sixty. Worry about our post-meeting meeting.
One thirty-four.
Forty-six.
Forty-four.
Yes.
Four thirty-six, one thirty-six.
One sixty.
One fifty-three.
Zero.
Four forty, one hundred seven.
One eighty-five.
Zero, two forty-nine.
Forty-three.
Four twenty-one, one seventeen.
One eighty. Forty-nine. Right.
Four eleven, one twenty-seven.
One seventy-four.
Two fifty-eight.
Forty-seven.
Four fifty, one, zero, five, zero, two hundred one.
Fifty-three.
Four fifty-nine, one hundred and six.
Zero.
One thirty-one.
Forty-two.
Four twenty-eight, one hundred five.
Yeah, I know. Two hundred.
And I'm doing the more nervous.
Yeah.
You can give them, but they're done, make it take some longer.
Twelve, seventy-five. Zero.
No, it's all right. I just give it to you. It's all right, we'll be fine. We're not done till we're all signing stuff anyway.
And more for.
Episode two, first round.
Yep, and it is.
I told Kayla, I said I held her thing. So I said, oh, it's running late, so should we reschedule for later or should we, um, reschedule? And I said, and I left the mic on, so I got all the numbers I'm reading to her. Who does that? Four hundred one, two hundred, zero, zero, five. Four hundred six, one ninety-one.
Sure.
One, zero, eight. Three eighty-one, two hundred five.
You gotta put in the individual.
Zero, zero, five.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Three sixty-nine, two twenty-two.
That's.
Zero, fifty.
That's.
Four hundred nine, one eighty-four, zero, one, five.
I think they regenerated by the voters.
One eighty-five, zero, zero, sixteen.
One six.
Three fifty-five.
State by voter registration program.
Zero, twenty-four. Three ninety-six.
I assume you just have to enter the, uh, results.
Ten.
One.
One ten. One twenty-seven.
And I voted and then all the forty.
Three fifty-one.
One seven.
Oh, it's gonna stay here.
Zero.
Two.
One.
Sixty. One eighty-one, twenty-three, one, two oh one. Four fifty.
Two forty-nine.
Zero, one fifty.
Zero.
Four fifty-two, two five, zero, one forty-nine.
One twenty. One ninety-seven.
Three seventy-four.
Zero.
Four forty-seven. Nine, zero, four eighty-two.
And that's why we test.
Two ninety-one, two ninety-four, three zero four. Two seventy-seven, three seventeen, three, twenty-five, one thousand five hundred. Two seventy-two, one seventy-seven. One.
Stop all the extras.
Two seventy-two, one sixty-eight, eight, one seventy-six.
And the certificates. And we don't want the, um, one officio that's signing those.
Nine five, one twenty-four, zero, one eighty-seven.
These aren't expensive, they're easy by two.
My heart is not broken.
That's because we used to make them ourselves out of ivory.
Three hundred, one twenty, zero, one eighty-six. Nine five, one eighteen.
You can still put it on a screen.
Two seventy-nine, one thirty-nine, zero, one ninety-six.
Sixty-one.
Three thirty-one, ninety-two, zero, one.
I write two, so one of them.
Three thirty-two, nine four.
Nine.
One zero, zero. Two forty-eight, three ten, zero, forty-eight.
One, zero, one oh nine.
Who's that?
Two twenty-six, seventy-one, thirty-four.
No. Because it's not like.
Four. Two eight one. One oh eight, one seven. One, zero, two. Four five, one seven.
End of surprising.
Zero.
Some of it costs more money.
Ninety-six, one seven. Yeah.
That's easy for you to say.
Four twenty-one, four zero eight, three zero three.
Ninety-six.
Four twenty-eight, four hundred two, zero, zero, five.
One twenty-one.
Three eighty-seven, four hundred three, twenty, zero, one, four.
One nine.
Three seventy-two, four thirty-six, zero, zero, thirty. Four seventy, three forty-six, zero, zero, nineteen. Four forty-two, three sixty-nine, zero, zero, twenty-four. Three sixty-four.
One oh one.
Four forty-five, zero, zero, twenty-six.
Nine.
Four fifty.
Eighty-six.
Three sixty-two, one, zero, twenty-two.
One.
Five seventy-four, twenty-one, zero, two four zero. Three eighty-six.
Two twenty-seven.
Three forty-six.
Three.
Three forty-three.
Zero.
Four twenty-two, four, two, one sixty-seven. Five eighty-nine, nineteen, zero, two twenty-seven. Five fifty-six.
Zero.
You need to like Lucy on the.
One forty-two.
Five forty-nine.
The cookie committee.
Yes. And I'm following behind.
Five forty-five, seven, five, three, zero, three sixty.
I'm not gonna eat them, so.
Five, four fifteen, sorry. Four zero nine, four fifty.
Two.
Three eight four, four oh four. Three one five, two one zero seven.
Zero.
Four oh two, one ninety-three, zero, two forty-one.
Yeah, very nice handwriting.
One ninety-four.
You have to sacrifice that if you're gonna be disgusting.
One fifty-five, one two seven.
I don't know that it's last night.
One forty-eight, zero, two eighty-seven, four hundred nine, one forty-one, two, two eighty-eight. Three ninety-two.
Nine five.
One fifty-three, one, two eighty-nine.
Forty-six.
Three eighty-five, one fifty-two, one, two ninety-seven. Three eighty-two, one fifty-eight, zero, two ninety-five.
Forty-four.
Four thirty-eight, one twenty-five, zero, two seventy-two.
Zero.
Four forty-six, one twenty-five, zero, two seventy-four.
One.
Four oh two, three six nine, zero, sixty-four.
Another little award, three.
I only get another two for that.
Four more.
Yep.
Here.
Four more.
Yeah. I'm in.
We need to ask, we're only doing one of them.
Zip, we got it.
Okay, Joe.
Sounds good, yeah.
Kayla's never done it.
Total favor, two ninety-four.
Four sixty.
Uh, one eighteen, one seventy.
Four forty-four, three, zero, zero, four twenty.
One nine.
One thirty-six.
One.
Three, zero, three.
Nine two.
Three seventy-three, four fifty-seven, twenty-eight, one, zero, four. Three seventy-two, four sixty-six, two, zero, twenty-three. Four seventy-one, three sixty-seven, zero, zero, twenty-five. Four twenty-seven, four twelve, two, zero, twenty-six.
Eleven.
Three fifty-seven, four seventy-four, two, zero, three thirty-five. Four fifty-nine, three eighty-four, zero, zero, twenty. Five seventy-nine, thirty-three, zero, two fifty-one.
Twelve.
Three seventy-seven, three thirty-six, three fifty-five, four sixty.
Eleven.
Ten.
Zero.
One seventy-five. Six thirty-seven.
Two thirty-five.
One, zero, twelve.
We need to keep them in order.
One ninety.
Well, I'm not promising, I'm trying. They just throw away just fast over there.
Not everybody does that, and then they have to, it's no big deal.
Sort of later, yeah.
Four seventy.
Yeah, I am trying to forget that one.
Here's a two pager, so I didn't want her to get the.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, I see.
Eight.
I understand.
Couldn't do that.
Zero.
Four forty-four.
So where was I?
One, seven, zero, two.
You can just.
Anywhere.
One seventeen.
Fifty-three.
One eighty-one, zero, two sixty.
Well, that one's definitely gonna.
Four thirty-one, one forty-seven.
Trust me.
Can't have every day.
Actually, I have a lot. If we were only in together, probably.
That's probably true.
One forty.
Four thirty-six.
That's right.
One twenty-one, two, nine hundred four.
I think.
Four hundred thirty. One thirty-six, one ninety-six.
One.
Twenty-five.
Okay, I'm weird.
No.
Because I know mine was two, and I would want them in.
One fifty-nine, zero, three one twelve.
Easier to go through.
Twelve. Four for seventy-two, one hundred ten, zero, two eighty-one, four seventy, one eighteen, zero, two seventy-one.
Man, am I getting behind.
Four fifty-eight, three twenty-nine, zero, eighty.
One.
Or you can look at this while you're at it, you're actually on the paperwork.
I know, we are, wait.
I can.
Pager Hudson.
Ask him to just rest. Depends on how worn out you are, Jeff. To think that they did the work, you have to do more than anything.
I almost see it on the.
Total paper, nine, twenty-six.
Forty-five.
Two eighty-six.
Four thirty, two, zero, eight.
Zero.
Four thirty-seven, four twenty-seven, one, zero, eleven.
Six.
Three ninety-seven, six hundred forty. Twenty-nine, two forty, zero, seven.
Six.
Three eight, zero.
[laughing].
Four seventy-seven, four sixty-six, one, zero, thirty.
Gonna make Karen work for her.
Four forty-four, four oh two, one, zero, twenty-eight.
Zero.
Three fifty-four, four eighty-nine, one, zero, thirty-one.
Three twenty-nine.
Four hundred seventy, three seventy-two, one, zero, thirty-two.
Two ninety.
Six hundred six, twenty-one, zero, two forty-seven. Three hundred.
Three thirty-two.
Three thirty-nine, three fifty-three, four sixty-two, twelve, two, two hundred two.
Eighty-six.
Six sixty-five, fourteen, zero, one ninety-six. Six ten, fourteen, zero, two fifty-one. Five ninety-three, thirteen, zero, two sixty-nine.
Seven eighty-four, ten.
Five thirty-nine, four ninety-nine, six, four, seven hundred two.
Nine.
Four fifty-three, four forty-six, four forty-six, four twenty-two, four twenty-six.
Three forty-three.
Six, thirty-five, two thousand one forty-one.
Four.
Four fifty-five, one eighty-three, one, two thirty-six, four thirty-one, one nine zero.
Five oh two.
Two fifty-one.
Five hundred.
Four sixty-one, four forty-three, two, two sixty-four.
One nine.
Four five, zero, one fifty-nine, zero, two seven four.
Four ninety-eight.
Four seventy-six, one, two, four, and two six, two seven.
Nine.
Four sixty-seven, one forty-six.
Four six.
Zero.
One sixty-two.
Four seven, zero, one thirty-four, one, two seven, zero, four fifty-five, one forty-three, zero, two sixty-seven.
One.
Four ninety-five, one eighty-one, zero, two sixty-five.
One.
Four ninety-six, one sixteen, one, two sixty-three, four fifty-three, three twenty-eight.
Four.
Ninety-three.
Two, zero.